Right.
It's kind of fun weekend coming up.
Uh, I think kind of uneventful frankly, I hope.
Yeah.
They're nice.
Yeah.
So it's not over.
Plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
Well, hopefully so.
Yeah.
Let all the people talk about that.
Again.
That's all the people ever.
I was gonna bring my hearing tonight.
Okay. What's the other thing? Such a short menu. And I think Kathy John did the thing there.
Oh, darn.
Do you want this?
Yeah.
Want to say eighteen's the record since I've been here.
I can sit down and work.
That's okay, Sandy, but thanks for the offer. Very generous of you.
Brands about right to appeal. Branders.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome Ms. Doreen Griffith with the, uh, who's Communications Director with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to deliver the invocation this evening. Welcome, Ms. Griffith.
Good evening. I just have a quick thought for you tonight as a council, and it's that I hope that you develop your swing. In nineteen thirty-six, there was an obscure rowing team from the University of Washington that was invited to the Olympics and qualified. They were lumber and mining people, had very little money that was put together, and everything was against them to be successful. But rowers have to rein in, this group had to rein in, all their independence to work together as a team. They have to, good crews are good blends, and sometimes it leads, someone has to lead the charge, sometimes someone has to hold something in reserve, someone has to fight the fight, and someone has to make peace. No rower is more valuable than another, and all are assets to the boat. But they, if they row well together, each must adjust to the needs of each other. The shorter-armed person reaching a little farther, and the longer-armed person pulling back just a little bit. These differences can lead to an advantage like on your team, but they found success, and they call this swing. When they are able to work together as a team, rowers develop swing. My wish for you tonight is that, as a, as a council, you will develop that swing. May we pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we could meet tonight with this council, and we're grateful to live in such a wonderful community as Canton, and to have such a wonderful place for us to go to school and to live and to worship. We're grateful for the goodness of these people who have given of their time for us and for the diligence they put into their office. We ask thee to bless this council, that they will always keep the needs of the citizens, best needs of the citizens in mind as they make decisions, and that they will be guided to do things that will keep us free and keep us healthy and wealthy and wise in this community. We ask thee to bless them with continued health and strength as they serve us. Help us to have a wonderful night as they serve and as they make these decisions, that they will bless the city of Canton. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. About to call our May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting to order. Begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. You have in your packet the draft minutes from our May fourth council meeting. Any changes or revisions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have no one, uh, signed up to speak at the ten-minute public input tonight. Uh, no information items. Any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move right into old business, beginning with item A, discussion and possible action on cases A, N, and X two-three-zero-three dash zero-zero-two and RZ zero-N two-three-zero-three dash zero-zero-one, annexation and rezoning request for one-point-four-two acres to be zoned general commercial for proposed convenience store with fuel pumps located at Heard Road and Fake Con Road. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, uh, the items are just as you read them from the agenda. It's the requested annexation of one-point-four-two acres and the rezoning from AG in the county to general commercial in the city for the construction of a convenience store with four fuel pumps. The original application was requesting, uh, two buffer variances, one to reduce one of the fifty-foot buffers down to five feet and one to reduce it from fifty feet down to twenty-five feet. Those were the, the two variances that was heard during the public hearing. They have altered their site plan a little bit to increase of the buffers. There were numerous people that spoke in opposition at the public hearing to this request. I will have not received any further comments from the citizens at Park Village or anyone else that was opposed to it. So.
Order, please. No comments, please.
This is the action meeting. It's up to the pleasure of the mayor and council. In the staff report, uh, there were, uh, we recommended from the staff a denial of the GC, recommended a possibly neighborhood commercial with some possible conditions for the council to consider.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. You have in your packet, uh, the staff's, um, report, uh, along with the, uh, possible conditions, uh, if, if council wanted to consider, uh, possible rezoning to, to neighborhood commercial. We'll begin with any discussion or comments, and I believe, um, if we do take action, we will have to have two separate votes, one on annexation and one on rezoning. Correct?
You'll take action on the annexation if for, if for whatever reason the annexation is denied, there's no reason to act.
Correct. Awesome. So we'll begin with discussion on the case for annexation of A N N X two-three-zero-three dash zero-zero-two. Comment for discussion?
Mr. Green, what was the, uh, county's recommendation or assessment?
Uh, the county was concerned with the plans as they were drawn and submitted for the access point and ingress point from the, um, of the subject parcel. They also recommended that the buffers along each side be thirty-five feet, which is their standard when county property abuts, um, other municipalities.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there's no other comment, I would like to make a motion regarding case A N N X two-three-zero-three dash zero-zero-two, uh, for denial. Second.
Of a motion for denial and a second. Need further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members present voted for denial. I believe we do have some members absent, but I believe three votes for denial, uh, creates a majority vote, which is means.
Well, the, the charter's requires for any ordinance that there be at least three votes when there's a quorum of three, so.
Therefore, the case is, uh, annexation is denied and, uh, the rezoning is irrelevant. Okay. So we'll move on to old business item B. Order, please. Would like for anyone that was present just for that case, if anyone would like to leave, now is your chance to do so orderly and quietly and quickly, please. Thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action on Georgia Power relocation agree, agreement. Ms. Watson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as we discussed at the last meeting, um, I, sorry. I'll try to speak louder. Is that better? Thank you. As we spoke at the last meeting, um, we received an agreement from Georgia Power for the relocation of six poles at Harmon Park. I did work with Atkins to, um, eliminate two of those poles, so now we will only be relocating four. Georgia Power has given me an amount, but I have not got the official agreement yet. The amount is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars to relocate those poles. So tonight, I would like to ask that we approve the Georgia Power relocation agreement in the amount of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, four, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement once we actually get the agreement.
Okay. So without the agreement, uh, if council voted to approve that, would we approve up to, not to exceed that amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson?
Yeah, just one question, Ms. Watson. I, you may have said this already. I'm so sorry if I wasn't paying enough attention. They agreed to leave one or two poles?
So we looked at the, the Harmon Park plans and were able to eliminate two of the poles being removed. So basically just shifting sidewalk over, or, um, in one case, I think that the sidewalk was wide enough that we're, we'll just leave the pole where it's at versus spending thousands and thousands of dollars to move. It's not going to be in the way of, of anything.
And it won't present an odd look?
Yes, it'll be.
Perfect. Thank you.
Watson, did you say it was, uh, a hundred and sixty-two thousand, four ninety-two or four ninety-three?
Four ninety-two.
Two. Sorry. I'm gonna make the dollar amount. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the Georgia Power relocation agreement, uh, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and to authorize the city manager to execute up to that amount.
Would you like your motion to include not to exceed that amount?
Up to, or not to exceed, um, apologies.
No, of course.
Restate?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, Georgia Power relocation agreement, uh, in the amount of a hundred and ninety, or a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-two, and authorize the city manager to execute, uh, not to exceed that amount.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Item C, discussion and possible action to award task order number nine to Black and Beach for design and bidding services for the State Road twenty, I five seventy-five water main replacement project. Mr. Otavian?
Yeah, like I, uh, mentioned last meeting, this is to, for design and bidding services to, um, run a new water line across the, uh, I five seventy-five bridge, um, eliminating a bottleneck in, bottleneck in our, um, water line. It's kind of piggybacking off the new, um, industrial park booster station as well.
Okay. And, uh, this is the amount we discussed.
It's, um, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars.
And that's what we discussed at the last meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Otavian?
I'd like to make a motion to approve and award the, uh, task order number nine to Black and Beach for design and bidding services for the SR one-twenty, I five seventy-five water main replacement project, uh, in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty-seven, five hundred and eleven dollars.
Do we have a second? A second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otavian. Item D, discussion and possible action on the city of Canton plat, pa, plant pallet following review by the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board. Mr. Green?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, as you are aware or may remember, Hughes Good, O'Leary, and Ryan, also known as H G O R, performed a study for the city on their current, or our current plant pallet and what species that they would recommend to be retained or removed or, or discussion on some that may have eroded defense. This item was discussed back in December of twenty twenty-two, and at that meeting, it was recommended that the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board to review the suggested plant pallet that was presented by H G O R. This, uh, committee met on April nineteenth. They went through the list, uh, tree by tree, and some they recommended for a removal, one they wanted added, and the list that I placed on in front of your chairs before the meeting, uh, reflects those. Those that are in black and green are the ones that are recommended to be retained. Also, uh, during the printing of the spreadsheet, the Loblawli pine was mistakenly put in as red, which was means to delete that one from the pallet, and also the short-leaf pine was not added to it. That was a recommendation to add that as a keeper tree. So, uh, if you've had a chance to review it and are happy with the recommended overstore and understore trees, and recommend approval of this, uh, new plant pallet, then we'll prepare an ordinance to delete, uh, table one oh-three dash one-one as it is currently in the ordinance and replace it with this new table. And that will come, hopefully, uh, the first meeting in July, because the timeframe to get to add to the paper is, uh, doesn't allow time for June first.
Okay. Thank you. This is an ordinance change, so we'd like to thank the Environmental and Sustainability Board for reviewing this. Any questions, comments? Ms. McGrew?
Is the short-leaf pine, um, overstory tree?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I have, um, a question about the, the table. Is this considered a, a living document that can be changed easily as we learn more about species that we can, uh, add or take away?
I would say that it is a static document, but if it needed to be amended, it could certainly be amended through an ordinance amendment.
So this is going to be an ordinance? Okay. Thank you.
It is an attachment to an ordinance.
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to approve the plant pallet as written and amended.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green. Item E, discussion and possible action on financial commitment letter to Canton Housing Authority for Oakside nine percent tax credit application. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, if you'll recall at the last meeting, we had a presentation by the Canton Housing Authority about their nine percent application at Oakside. Uh, we had previously committed last fall to a million dollars, uh, in financial commitment to Oakside under a four percent application. They have changed to a nine percent application and requested that we provide an updated letter of commitment on that nine percent application. I will note that in the original attachment that was provided as part of the agenda, there was a reference in the last section, uh, under additional terms and conditions where four percent was still listed. That has been changed on the document before you to the reference nine percent. Happy to answer any questions you might have, uh, on, on the letter.
And just to clarification, this is, uh, not an additional commitment of one million dollars. This is the same commitment, uh, just the nine percent application versus the four percent, previous four percent application, correct?
That is correct. And, and one comment from the last meeting, a, as you recall, Mr. Robinson had mentioned that they, depending on how the off-site, uh, improvements would be calculated, they might look at our commitment form of, you know, a portion of it going towards permanent financing and another portion of it going towards off-site improvements. They were able to meet all of their off-site improvements without this commitment, and so our million dollars would be in the form of a traditional loan.
Traditional loan, correct. Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Peppers, would you mind, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Would you mind, uh, uh, talking for just a second about the terms of that loan?
Sure. So this particular loan.
Excuse me, Mr. Peppers, can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
This particular loan is a million dollars, uh, that becomes, uh, uh, basically a secondary financing, uh, for the project. Uh, it is based off of a fifteen-year, uh, repayment, uh, term. Uh, when they were running the original financials, they believe that they may be able to pay it off in faster than, than fifteen years. Um, over the course of that time, the city will collect interest in some of the initial paperwork that we've, that we've seen based on project financing. We should net a couple hundred thousand dollars in interest payments over that, over that period of the loan.
Thank you.
What is the fund sourcing for the loan?
So we, we will be utilizing, uh, some of the, uh, ARPA funds that we received from the federal government as part of the COVID stimulus. Uh, that's what we would use to pledge towards this particular project.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any further questions? Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, vote for approval on the financial commitment letter to Canton Housing Authority for the Oakside nine percent tax credit application.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Item F, discussion and possible action on ordinance amendments related to definitions of electric bicycles for use within public parks. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. Uh, as you recall at the last meeting, we talked about ordinance amendments that would allow for bicycles to be used within our parks and trails. Uh, there was a concern that was brought up about a, uh, from a resident as it relates to, um, personal mobility, um, equipment. Uh, Mr. Dyer has additionally added that language in here, and so what you have before you are some, um, ordinance changes under parks and recreation that would allow those electric bicycles and that personal mobility equipment.
I want to thank, uh, Mr. Dyer for adding that language, uh, on the personal mobility, uh, devices, uh, that, that they are allowed, uh, in the ordinance, uh, and, and if approved, I would like to see us go step one, one step further and just also that, that we would promote that, 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 that not only are these allowed, they're encouraged on the trails, so, for our citizens with disabilities, so. Any further questions, comments?
Now, if there are no other questions or comments, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the ordinance amendments related to definitions of electric bicycles for use within public parks. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Move into new business. We have one item, discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding with Cherokee County for the permitting of Technology Ridge Parkway earth stockpile site. Mr. Peppers?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council, uh, as you know, Cherokee County is working on Technology, uh, Ridge Parkway, which is a connection road between Bluffs Parkway and Fake Con. A realignment of that Fake Con Heard Road intersection as part of their overall improvement of Heard Road all the way up to the airport from Bluffs. Uh, they're currently working on the land work, uh, as it relates to that phase of the project. Uh, Mr. Morton, the county manager, reached out to me. Uh, they are having to remove some, uh, some earth as part of that project, some, some of the, some of the actual dirt for that roadway. They want to relocate that dirt onto their property that, uh, they have a transaction with right now with Becker for that development, because it will be used on that site. As such, the county wants to handle their own permitting, which they can do in the county. They do all their erosion control, land disturbance permits and what have you. So in this particular instance, they're just asking for a memorandum of understanding, uh, or with the city, basically us allowing them to do that permitting on their own within the city limits. Uh, staff has reviewed this. We don't have any problem with that. They just want to memorialize that.
Okay.
And we did ask for, we do bring this before you for discussion and possible action because we want to help them move forward on that roadway project.
Okay. Any, uh, questions or discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Peppers, we know that when you move earth, there could be drainage issues. So who will be doing inspections and how often to make sure that these earth piles aren't draining improperly?
So their, their erosion control staff will be responsible for all inspections. Um, they will be responsible for all of the, the soil that's being moved to make sure that all of the silt fencing that's required, every, anything that might be required as part of a land disturbance permit is, is followed. Their contractor will be actually moving the dirt, and then they will be handling the inspections.
Will Ms. Watson be going out there at all to check?
We do go out there occasionally to check on the project, just because it is in the city limits, but it is a project that they have permitted and they are responsible for as the owner. If we do get complaints, we will work through that process with the county and make sure they handle all of the, the issues that could come up.
What's downhill from that?
Almost everything that's going to be downhill from that side is property that the county owns.
Okay. What about drainage into the sewer system, um, and out to the river?
There's not any sewer inlets in that particular area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Cherokee County for the permitting, uh, for Technology Ridge Parkway earth stockpile site.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Mr. Peppers, your report?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. You have before you a copy of our April twenty twenty-three operations report. It is online on the website for our residents, if they would like to look into that. Uh, there's, uh, there's some interesting information in there as it relates to, um, specifically as it relates to licensing and permitting. As you, as you well know, March is the, the time period where business license, occupational license are required to be completed with the city. So generally in April, we'll see an influx of new licenses as part of that process. So you've got a listing of those in here, as well as, uh, COs that have been issued, public works projects that have occurred and, and projects that are currently under construction, as well as updates on some of our major capital projects in the city. Um, I will not go through those, but if you have any questions, I'll be hap, happy to answer any of your questions. Additionally, there were a couple of other items I wanted to mention to you tonight. Uh, as we always do, we recognize a team member of the month. Uh, our team member of the month for April was Officer Carlos Hanau with our Police Department. Uh, it was, it's always interesting when we do that, because we don't tell them why they're meeting with us, and they get a little bit nervous, and then they come in the room and they're just like. Candy and a, a nice gift card and, and a, an award for them. Candy and a, a nice gift card and, and an award for them, and, and they enjoy that. When we went over to the police department, several of them were looking at me very strangely, wondering why, you know, why they're hiding someone in a room to meet with the city manager. So that's always a little bit fun, too. But Officer Hanau was also one of, one of the award winners for the city this past year as part of the Rotary Club's Awards for Law Enforcement. And actually, there was a social media post with Officer Hanau the other day where he was assisting a resident with some of their property getting across the street. He's a great team member of the department. He's an individual that's always willing to assist, and, and those that nominated him made sure to state what a wonderful personality he has and how everybody wants him on their team in that department. So we're very, very proud of Officer Hanau and, and we're glad we were able to recognize him. Another recognition that the city did receive that I will show to you tonight is we have partnered with some of our marketing funds out of our hotel tax over the last couple of years on the Historic Canton Magazine that goes out, that talks about some of our businesses in the community. As part of that process, that particular publication was put up for a, a Media Excellence Award, and it won for its category, and we were provided with this trophy that we could showcase as a city, as part of our partnership in that. When I go around to, to different parts of the state of Georgia and we talk about things that we do for small businesses and things that we're able to do to, to improve communication about things that the city does, I always highlight that magazine. It's an opportunity for us to talk about our boards and commissions, opportunity to talk about projects, it's an opportunity to highlight new businesses in the community, and an opportunity to highlight some of the history of our community as well. And so it was a, it was a great recognition for the folks at Tri-State Communications that produced that, as well as the city as one of the partners in that. So I did want to make you aware of that. I don't have anything else unless you have any particular questions you might have for me. Oh, I do have something else. I apologize. Today, or, or maybe yesterday, depending on how your mail runs, or maybe tomorrow, you will likely receive your property tax assessment from the tax assessor in Cherokee County. This is the time of year where I field lots of phone calls from residents who are upset at the city of Canton as it relates to their property tax assessment. This is also the time of the year where I put out my, my annual reminder that tax assessments are not a function of the city of Canton. They're not a function of any city. They're not a function of the county. They are a function of the tax assessor's office. And the city's only responsibility as it relates to property tax is setting a millage rate or a rate by which property taxes are calculated. There, I believe this year, the assessments, the digest in the city is projected to have gone up twenty, twenty-two, almost twenty-three percent. I think countywide, it was closer to fifteen to sixteen percent, and only a small portion of that was from new development. Most of that is an increase on property assessments on existing properties. We do have information on our website about how you can file for, file with the assessor's office if you, if you have a concern about your assessment. That is a process that they control that we're not involved with, but those will go out. You may receive some questions on those. If you do, I'm happy to answer those questions and make sure we point people in the right direction if they have a concern with their assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers, for reminding our citizens about that. I can personally vouch for that. I received mine today, and I was a proud recipient of a forty-two percent increase in my assessment. So after a couple of prolex, I am happy to attest that indeed our citizens will probably be seeing some increases in their assessments. But again, the information is on the website about how you can file to appeal that in the process to follow there as well. So again, congratulations to Officer Hanau. He's an excellent representative of the city and appreciate his good work. And congratulations to the team on the Historic Canton Magazine. Do a wonderful job, and our partners on that, very proud of our, we're gonna have to get a bigger trophy case for the city, so wonderful recognition. So any other questions for Mr. Peppers? We didn't have any. Counsel introduced items at agenda approval, but Ms. McGrew, do you have something?
I have just a question for you. Are you going to mention Taste of Canton in your-
I can. We had an excellent Taste of Canton. Hopefully some of you attended. Apparently, I'm mentioning that in my remarks, so. But Taste of Canton at the Mill and Etowah, which had been rescheduled from an earlier rainout, was just a wonderful event. It was actually so successful, I think that we ran short of tickets. I think there were thousands of the citizens who attended, saw some of you there, and it was just a wonderful event, wonderful food from our wonderful restaurants. Was a great event and the, just one, a great turnout, all due to the hard work of our Main Street Board and our citizen volunteers and our team at the city on Team Canton. So thanks to everyone who made that such a wonderful event, and thanks to our restaurants and our, our restaurant owners who participated in force and made that such a wonderful event. We had people from, from communities around the region who, who drove. I saw some people who, who came down from Blue Ridge for that event, and I know there were people from Roswell and, and Coming and now Ferretta who came over just for that event. So a very successful event and look forward to that next year or so. I only had one other item in my report. I received a, an email from Brandy Rousseau, the, the president of our Main Street Board, and with a unanimous recommendation from the board for a reappointment of Ray DeLuca for the Main Street Board. Mr. DeLuca has been, been reappointed a couple of terms for the Main Street Board, has done, served the board very well, works very hard, especially on our First Friday Series. And based on the board's recommendation, I would like to nominate Mr. DeLuca for, to serve another term for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-three through the end of the year for two thousand, two thousand and twenty-three. So I'd like to appoint him to the Main Street Board for the remainder of this year, and I'd ask for a second for that appointment and a vote.
Second.
So we have a nomination and a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We'll let Mr. DeLuca know that he's appointed through the end of two thousand and twenty-three, so. And I believe that is all we have this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.